Yeah. And we remember our special meeting, so. But what do you mean we are comments? It's true. We're looking at.
Testing, testing. Yeah. Can we all please come to order? And I want to thank those that are here. And roll call, Joan.
Charles Long.
Here.
Chris Mortensen.
Here.
Michael Shaw.
Here.
Priscilla Manulito. Kevin Mitchell.
Okay, thank you board members. We do have a quorum, so. Let's begin our special meeting. Pleasure for allegiance, Chris. Thank you board members and those in the audience. Thank you for. Being with us this morning. We do have a special meeting. We do have. Two action item that we will be addressing. Let's go to item number two, approval of the agenda, board members.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the agenda. Let. Special consideration, let Mayor Jackie McKinney address the board.
Okay, motion's been made. Is there a second?
Mister, Mister President. If we're gonna open for public comment, is that what we're doing, sir?
Uh, well, since we have our mayor here, I wanted to give him some time, you know, he's. The leader of the city of Gallup. So that was the reason, but I have another request that we can consider as a public comment.
Joan, can, are we able to do that? To change the agenda now on a special meeting agenda?
Your discretion.
So open for public comment?
I'm okay, I'm okay with opening for public comments, so if we're gonna do that, we'll.
Uh, no, I just want during the adoption of the agenda. The motion's been made that we will give time to our mayor and then to open a public comment.
Is that the motion? To give time to the mayor and. I'll second the motion to allow public comment for, to, to add public comment to.
And then the mayor, right? Okay. Yeah. Agashin.
Do we have any of those yellow forms we need to? No?
So. Roll call, Joan.
Mister Mitchell. Miss Manulito.
Yes.
Mister Shaw.
Yes.
Mister Mortensen.
Yes.
Mister Long.
Yes, thank you board members. I mean, this is the first time we're doing this, so. There's no public comment during special meetings. Uh, but I think we do have. An agenda item that, that. Requires. Comments from the people, so at this time I'd like to give the floor. Yeah, I remember public comments is three minutes. Mayor, you got the floor, sir. We're glad to have Mayor McKinney here with us. I think it's always a privilege to have one of our local, local mayors. Or local leaders in the audience. And I always like to hear from our leaders what their thoughts are. On our educational system. Uh, if there's any. Areas that need improvement. We are glad to hear from our leaders. Mayor?
Agashin, okay, Mister Chair. School board members, thank you for the opportunity. I assume that I will be speaking during the action item that you have on your agenda, but. If, if this is an appropriate time, I appreciate the opportunity. And for anyone.
Hold on, Mayor.
Testing, testing, is that, is that man in the audience testing? Once again, thank you very much. I come to you because of the potential of a name change for the city Gallup. I see it as an action item. In your agenda today and the new business, item B. I just wanted to make sure that there's a lot of thought that goes into this consideration for your board on the decision-making process that you go through. You've certainly all been entrusted by the people that you represent to represent our entire school system. Uh, myself, being a graduate of Gallup McKinley County Schools. It did well for me. And I remember the day back in the, I, I don't remember exactly the timing, but it's the late fifties, early sixties when. The Gallup Public Schools was renamed to Gallup McKinley County School System. Which was a great time, a great time of celebration. For the city Gallup to join in and partner with the county. And to support the school systems which we all recognize. I know that they would have recognized at that time the importance of the education of our youth. And I look at what our, our individual functions are. I know that as the mayor of this city, we in the council work together even though we're divided into districts. Each councillor represents our district, but they also speak for Gallup as a whole. When they vote and they think about the success and failures that we might encounter. To me, it's all about attitude. As I've gotten older, to me, everything's about attitude. It's about attitude and dealing with people and doing what's best. For our surrounding area, for our citizens of our surrounding area. I take it very personal when I represent the city and when this item was discussed and it came apparent, I started receiving numerous phone calls. Numerous emails. I didn't receive any letters because of this new technology, people are more communicative, but I do not Facebook. My wife does, though, and everyone knows that she is my wife. And with her amount of friends, she was inundated with a lot of comment. From people that she would pass on to me. I won't even walk across my living room floor to sit at her computer and read Facebook. It's. I, I don't like it. I think Facebook is a very destructive item in our society today. But what I'm here for is the amount of con, comment I got. From not only citizens in the city Gallup, but people that are outside the city. When we start talking about dividing ourselves and putting ourselves in separate silos. I find that. Not productive. And especially when our youth look up to leadership. And they look to you naturally as school board members and leading this system. For the benefit of all of the students in the Gallup McKinley County School System. I'm concerned about them looking and if they see division, then where are they gonna go? When I came into office eight years ago, a big word that was used was regionalization. It was a new tag word that just came out in those days about everyone working together. But if we all get in the boat and we wanna go upstream, we better all row together. If you get people rowing in different directions, then that boat seems to go in a circle. So it has been one of my jobs to work diligently to work with the county. With the Navajo Nation. With the state of New Mexico and with our federal government. And I think that when we took that attitude to these meetings, that we wanted to share information and work together for a common goal of success. I've found that it, it worked really well. When it comes to the potential renaming of the school district. I just want to remind this board that Gallup is the tax base. Gallup is the, the center of activity. That promotes the families from all around our area that come in. We have numerous people that travel in to work here every day. I take that very seriously about providing employment and jobs for the surrounding area. And we've worked real hard when we took economic development out of the city and put it into the private sector. It's important. And we're just now seeing the first dominoes falling, the success of that working together in the private sector. So I'm in sincere hopes that you consider. The number of people that come to this community and that we're united community. And that we should work together for the benefit of our students when our state, and let me tell you how hard it is in my position. To work with the state government and the federal government when we're forty-eighth, forty-ninth, or fiftieth in just about every category. From education to poverty to. Income, it really puts us against the, against the wall. So if we start dividing ourselves, I think that it shows that we're not united. And the united front to go and lobby. Uh, when we met with the governor during the legislative session and her large roundtable that our Gallup McKinley County Day. Worked on and called that meeting which the school was a part of. The first item that I brought up, sitting right next to the governor, was impact aid. And we fought that battle alongside you. Through the session. We didn't get the results that we wanted, but we're not done. And certainly you guys are gonna have to make big decisions on where you go in the future, and I think that the door's wide open, but. This new governor is committed to work with our schools, to work with our city, to work with our county. And I think that her being in office for just two months, she didn't have in her staff time to evaluate all the. Issues that were brought forward from previous administrations. So I stand before you on behalf of not only myself, but the number of citizens that have called me and contacted me saying, please don't divide us. Please don't separate us and put us in separate silos. I think we need to look at the short term and the long term ramifications. We did it through the city. We did a. We call it rebranding, but basically it was creating a new logo and jumping on board to support the state. And being a real, true state, and that's who we are in New Mexico, that's who we are in Gallup McKinley County area. And the reservation properties. We are true. We are true to our lifestyle. We're true to who we are. And we wanna keep that image in front of everyone, so I, I, I don't think that dividing us is a successful part. When I look at. The partnerships that the cities had with the school system, we've provided the ballfields. For Fort Wingate, Saru, Tohachi. They come in and play their high school games on our fields. With no compensation. Uh, we have a great working partnership with the Aquatic Center next door. And that benefits not only the school system, but the citizens of this community and, and outside the community. So we're working together well, and I think that the opportunities in the future are massive. So I sincerely ask that you consider, give thoughtful consideration about the attitude. You're going to portray. With the potential of any name changes, let's be who we are. Let's be true to who we are. And the city is, is certainly on board to support the school system in any way that we can. For now and the future. But I ask thoughtful consideration is made and I appreciate the opportunity to stand before you. Thank you.
Agashin, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your input on impact aid. All we got was hush monies from the state. Thirty-four million dollars. We have a city councillor here. Remember three minutes, please, and then Mister Foster and any other that wants to speak.
It'll be less. Good morning. My name's Fran Palitick and I'm city councillor for the west side for District Four, but for the whole city of Gallup. I was born and raised in Gallup, New Mexico. I'm a homegrown Galupian. Uh, the only time I left was when I joined the US Navy. I'm a nineteen seventy-three graduate of Gallup High School. And I've gone to all of Gallup Public Schools. So for me. I don't want to see our name changed, simply because Gallup is part of the schools. We have nineteen schools here. And my granddaughter posed a question to me who's a Gallup High School student. And she said, if they change it to McKinley County Schools, does that mean Gallup is no longer part of the schools? Do they not care about me, a Gallup student? And I, I didn't know how to answer that. But that is how our youth and students think about this. They feel they are no longer part of the schools. Are we gonna be a separate district, she asked? Are you gonna take care of Gallup or now they're no longer considered worthy to be considered students? So for her, this is a sixteen-year-old girl that is thinking that. So I'm asking you to think long and hard about that. This does not just affect you. This, this logo is inclusive of every single student in the area. Keep it the way it is. Let's be unified, that we're all important, every single student. Native, non-native. Any kind. Anybody that's youth attending our schools deserves our commitment. Thank you.
Agashin, thank you, Fran. Mister Foster. Okay.
Good morning. Chairman, vice, the members. And we're representing superintendent. And all the people here this morning. I'm Larry Foster and the grandfather of a student at Topeka Turpin and Chief Manulito. But also I'm a member of the Indigent People's Commission here in the city of Gallup. A member of Navajo Nation. Regarding the name change, the resolution that been presented. And my discussions with my people and the community. And the net people, the people from the grassroots. And some of the students. But what they're saying to me as a representative here is. The Gallup McKinley County Schools that has outlawed its name, position. Because of schools that have grown out there in the county. Navajo, New Mexico, out in Papua Kantara, Saru, Tohachi. These schools that have grown. And what the parents are saying, this is all about money, JOLN monies, federal impact money. They want that to be utilized correctly out there. And I think one of your position here and one of your need to define. What consolidated means. The other one is unified. What does that mean? But. What I know about unified is that's when you put unified communities together. The uni, the schools that I mentioned, those communities out there. Those are, they need to unify that, that becomes a unified school district, consolidated meaning, simply means. Bringing the different schools together, the schools that aren't met. So we have McKinley County Unified School District, McKinley Consolidated School District. Then the other one, Gallup McKinley County Schools. That has outgrown its capacity. So we need to think about the future. So this name change, if it does change, it's gonna change again in the future. It's gonna outlaw its. Name and capacity and all of that. So I wanna say that much coming from the grassroots people out there, so.
Agashin, thank you, Mister Foster.
Good, good morning. On behalf of the Navajo Nation, we have the mayor of Gallup here. Where's the Navajo Nation president? Where's the Navajo Nation vice president? Where's the Navajo Nation chapter officials? Have they been notified? Those chapter officials out from Papua Kantara, Navajo, Crystal, where are they? Say yeah, Tohachi, Twin Lakes, where are they? This impacts our Navajo Nation. I represent the Navajo Nation as a Navajo Nation member. I graduated from Tohachi High School. I have children that are alumni of Tohachi High School, Twin Lakes Elementary, Tohachi Elementary. And I have a grandson now at Tohachi Elementary. So I represent the Navajo Nation and I wanna speak on behalf of the Navajo Nation. When we talk about communication, we know that there is little or no communication based on internet or wifi on the Navajo Nation. You're very fortunate if you have any type of a technology out there, any type of wifi or internet services. We have dead zones all over, even in the Cronpoint Police District, right in that area. There's no internet services. Our community is unaware of these changes. There is no rush. Why are we rushing this? If we're gonna change and we know that the student population for the Gallup McKinley County School District right now is over ninety percent Navajo. So it should be McKinley Navajo School District. That should it be. We should take Gallup name off of the school district name. When we look up north, what does it say? Does it say Shiprock School District? Does it say Farmington District? No, it says Central Consolidated School District. Why are we putting Gallup McKinley School District? We shouldn't. Communication wise, our Navajo people are unaware. I know because I reside out there. I work in Cronpoint, there's dead zones all the time when I go out to Cronpoint, when I go out to Saru. You're lucky if you have internet from Cronpoint to Saru, Cronpoint to Farmington, even Cronpoint to Yatahe Junction. How do our people know that this change is happening? We're not dividing Gallup. We're here in Gallup every weekend benefiting, benefiting Gallup, the city of Gallup. Every weekend we're here, you know, parked out by Yatahe and Count. Every vehicle coming in from eight AM to twelve noon times twenty dollars a vehicle. That's how much we contribute to the city of Gallup. We're not dividing Gallup. I think we're rushing this and that our community is unaware. We should do more radio advertising on the Navajo radio stations. To inform our Navajo people of these changes. We've been part of Gallup too, too long. Uh, we have two, a large number of Navajo students. And they should, every parent should be aware of these changes before we make a, a change on the school district name. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Agashin, okay. Georgiana?
Good morning. Y'all, hello? Good morning, members of the board. And our guest here this morning, Mister President, it's good to see you. Thank you, counsel. Thank you very much and the opportunity to speak this morning on behalf of the school district name. My question to you, members of the board, is why this change? Is it to? Is it political? Is it money? A lot of our students and a lot of our parents that I talked to and some of my sisters on our committee asked why the change. Does Gallup need a title change? A couple of months ago, it was brought up that they wanted to divide the district, which was from a lot of point. How the parents viewed it was a political, with political gain. Was to have somebody, you know. Get that, get that name out there to the parents. Is this what it's about again? Why, why all of these? A lot of our people like the name, like the logo, because Gallup is a diverse, is a diverse city. Of every nation, of every color, of every kind. You cannot be a discriminative person in this town. You just can't. And. Is it, it's, it's, it's gonna be more money that's gonna go into this. There's letterheads that the school has, there's papers, there's proper documentation, and you're gonna have to change all of that. In the meetings that I sat in, your meetings of the Board of Education, money has always been a topic. And since you're gonna change this, wouldn't there be more money spent to change the title, to change the logo? More money is gonna be put into it. When our children, some of them lack in books in the classroom. Members of the board, you say that you're here for our children, not only mine in particular, but every person who sits in this audience, even yours. Are you really here for our children? May I ask that question? Because for me as a parent, even before I joined this committee, I was here at the board meetings. I stood here and gave my opinion. And while my children attend Gallup McKinley County School, I will continue to stand before you with the questions and the concerns of my fellow parents that I, that my children attend school with. So, you know, with all of this, and it creates a lot of, it creates a lot of division with parents of what they think, what they don't think. And, you know, as my sister has spoken up here, it's. How much effort was put into this to inform parents? Not a lot of people have Facebook. I don't have Facebook for that very free reason of drama. You know, and I'll give you a very good example. Yesterday, there was schools on lockdown within this town. And when I got to the school building, no parent had any idea what was going on, none whatsoever. A lot of parents were upset because number one, the school would not release their children to them. Number two, they were putting into, they were putting these children into the bus and parents were saying, I hope these parents know what's going on because we don't. We're, we're standing at the school site and I hope these children get picked up by the right parent. If there's a shooting going on and these children are getting on the bus and you're gonna be releasing them into danger. Secondly, was that. A robo-call went out and tell, everything was said and done. Secondly, was that a robocall went out and tell, everything was said and done. It sounds to me like members of the board, you're lacking in some areas and I don't think that a title change or a logo change should be at the top of your list. Our children are falling behind and we are what, 48th in the state, in the country? And we're talking about a name change? We're talking about a logo change? Really? If we are here for our children, then you know how many people say like, put your money where your mouth is? I think we need to start, no, I don't think, I know we need to start putting our children as our first priority. And I come to you with that, with members of the board and that with some of my IEC, IEC sisters, that is what we were talking about. And it's a main, it's, they're upset and they're wondering why. As an IEC committee and as some of my sisters, this is what we, this is our passion, is to fight for our students, every single one of them. Doesn't matter what color, doesn't matter what gender. That's why we are the committee that we are. And I hope my comment doesn't fall on deaf ears, but thank you.
Thank you. I guess with that, we'll move forward to, yeah, three minutes.
And hi, my name's Rebecca Nez and I'm, have a lot of students here, my students. I watched the board meeting online last time and you could barely hear the comments. So just word of advice, maybe turn up the microphone so those that are watching online can actually hear. I actually watched you guys talk about this topic at your last board meeting and a lot of questions came to my mind as a parent, as well as that my other sisters have addressed is when, when did this topic come up? Where are the parent information? Not a lot of people watch the board meetings, are able to attend. So therefore, nobody is really knowing about this. And when I heard about it, I thought, they're going to have to change the buses? They're going to have to change the school district vehicles, apparent liaison vehicles? That's going to cost a lot of money. We in Tohatchee hardly get buses that even work. How, I'd rather spend the money on that. So that's where I come in is spend the money on our students that actually you're, they're the reason why you're up here is for them. And like, spend it on issues that are plaguing them, bullying, suicidal prevention and actual something to do with suicidal prevention. And what are we doing for our graduation rates? Are we creating a mentoring program to up our graduation rates? Spend the money on something like that. That way we can say our graduation rates are coming up because we have a mentoring program in place. Our suicidal rates amongst our students are going down because we have a suicidal program, not only within Gallup schools, but in our rural schools as well. That way we can show what exactly we are doing, not political. And another thing is, we can change the name of our school district till we're blue in the face, but we need to change our staff's behavior. When we walk into our schools, we don't get what do you want from our school staff, the front people, arguing with our parents, everything. Let's spend that money on professional development for our teachers that are not native, that don't understand our students. Let's spend our money towards something that actually counts our students, something that we can show proof. Because this is going to cost a lot of money to rename it and it's going to just not be worth it because our students, our staff, our schools are what need that money to go to, not renaming it. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to our consent agenda item, I want to thank Tim, Joan, Paletta, and Giovanna, and then the staff that are here, Ben, Sandra, went over here. I also want to thank the mayor, city councilor, and then of course, the union for being here. Let's go down to agenda item number three, open meetings resolution. Board members?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda item 3A.
Negotiating. Motion second by, motion was made by Chris Mortensen, second by Michael Shaw. Any comments? None? Let's roll call, Joan.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Thank you, board members. Let's go to new business, new business A, approval of the collective bargaining agreements between Gallup McKinley County School District and then Mcfuse. Board members?
I would like to make a motion.
Okay. Hold on. Tim?
Yeah, Mr. President, board members and audience, a couple of things I'd like to say about this agenda item. First of all, the members of Mcfuse, their team, as well as our district team, have been meeting since about the middle of February to try and make sure that all of these items are addressed and negotiated. So I would like to thank our union president, that is Patrice Carpenter, as well as our executive vice president, Brian Bernard, for all the time that they've put in to make sure that we, we were successful in negotiations. They spent time on Saturday as well with their union members to ratify this agreement. And so we appreciate all of the work that they spent. We also have some, Lee, in our audience who spent a lot of time as well. She even spent a lot of time that wasn't part of the meetings, trying to make sure that we were able to negotiate these items. And so if I need to, I can go through them if you would like me to. Everybody's had an opportunity to look at them. There was one item that was not in your board packet that I sent down and had at your desk. It was Article 39. It was not in your board packet, but it was ratified by the union on Saturday. So if you have any questions, I will address those.
Board members?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Bond, I just had a question. One question is, we had a lot of legislative changes that were handed down. And I guess it'd be for you or Giovanna, were all the requirements that are indicated in the legislative session all adapted now into our, into this union agreement?
Yes, as far as I know, they are, and I believe Giovanna agrees with me. And I don't believe the board or the, Mcfuse would have agreed to it if we didn't have all of those things in there as well.
And my, and my second is a request. We have a lot of schools around our area, BIE schools, also some of the charter schools and university that are really in need of the calendar. So if we could get a public blast to all of our surrounding area partners in education that they, I think they're kind of waiting on us. So if we could, if we could do that and get it all, the information out to them, once this is approved, I would really appreciate that.
Yeah, that is our plan to try and make sure we get those out.
Ms. Hanks?
President Long, members of the board, members of the audience. So there's been a lot of changes that came out of the legislative session and we are working with those as quickly as possible, but some of them are currently being interpreted by PED, the New Mexico Public Education Department. We should have everything wrapped up by this Friday and I believe that we will have on May the 29th, which I believe is our next scheduled board meeting, a full report out to the board. But we do plan on getting all of that out. Just a lot of change, a lot of change in administration has made this quite a different year than many previous years. As far as getting everything in place, PED has put out a lot of new documentation that the school district is now required to complete. So we, we do want to assure you that we are in compliance with everything that is required. It's just some of the formalization of that is taking a little bit longer this year because of all the changes. We do appreciate the patience of the board, the union, the community. We are making sure that we are getting everything in place.
Thank you very much, Giovanna, for that. So, Mr. Long, if you could add that to the next agenda on May 29th, if we could get that update, sir? Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, the, the calendar, if this is approved today, the calendar really should be set in the next couple of days and we will be able to get that out. Part of the struggle and challenge that we had with the calendar was that the state offered what they call extended learning time. And if districts were willing to have kids in school 10 more days, then that calendar changed. With the ratification of that on Saturday from the union, that will be in place in our school district. And what happens is basically our teachers will be working six more days, but kids will be going to school 10 more days. And you ask, how does that happen? There's a couple of ways. I believe we had three different data days that were full days that kids didn't come to school. Those days will become student days. We've added two days upfront and we've added four days at the end. I believe that makes nine. And then we took away one of the days around fall break to make sure that there were 10 days more for kids. And so hopefully with that added instruction, our students will continue to improve even at a quicker rate.
So, so Mr. Bond, this, this is not up to date then? This is, or it is?
No, the calendar that you have there is the calendar that was ratified by the union. I believe that students start on August the 5th and go till May the 29th, but that is an increase of 10 days. Students will now be in school 188 instead of 178. Yeah, and really, I mean, once you have approved it all today, then we will be able to get the calendar out. There's a lot of other things that Giovanna's talking about that we have to get in place as well, but the calendar really will be set once we figure out the days of some of our other employees that work longer than 190 day contract.
Thank you. Tim? Brian, you have a fancier title now, executive vice president. Yeah, it's, it's not plain president anymore, huh? So what is the pleasure of the board on this?
I would like to make a motion of the approval of the collective bargaining agreement between Gallup McKinley County School District and Mcfuse for school year 2019, 2020.
I'd like to second.
Okay, motion was made by Michael Shaw and second by Priscilla Manuelito. There's no further comments? Roll call, Joan?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Thank you, board members.
Mr. President? I just wanted to thank our administration, along with Mcfuse, Brian, and Patrice for all the hard work that went into this. I know it takes many, many hours to come to compromises and to change things and go through things in order to accommodate both sides. So thank you.
Thank you. Board members, will you go to new business B, approval of renaming our school district?
Mr. President? I just wanted to kind of comment on this for a bit. One of the things that I know that are, you know, the, I would like to ask about is, I think a lot of our community members have concern about the cost. So if Mr. Bond or Giovanna would like to break down that cost, I think that would help a lot of our parents and constituents, even our leaders, understand where the funds will be coming from to do that. And I just wanted to say, one of the things that was commented on, I was in Cronpoint and when a young student came up to me and I was talking about our school district of Gallup McKinley County and they were, then he asked me, well, when are we going to get that? And I said, what do you mean, you? And he says, well, you know, Gallup gets that, when are Gallup McKinley County gets that, when are we going to get that here in Cronpoint? And I said, you are a part of Gallup McKinley County. And but I, and that's where I think my heart kind of sunk. And I know there was a comment made earlier, but I think it's also the reverse side of that, when our kids in the rural area don't feel a part of Gallup McKinley County. And, and I think that's where I wanted more compassion of. I truly love where I live and I truly respect our leaders and of Gallup McKinley. And I think that we, I don't want to disrespect anybody or even our Gallup. Gallup has been such a critical place and a crucial place to our communities and a lot of our neighbors in our rural area families come out because Gallup supports the initiative of their livelihood of the first of the month. And I think that's where, you know, we wouldn't change anything. I think what we're doing is unifying and uniting and bringing our communities together. I would never, never, ever would I want to divide that in any way. And I think just being respectful of the comments that were made earlier of, you know, how are our, our people in our rural areas due to not enough internet or not enough time for them to respond is something that I think we need to really take into heart about this. And then also, we were also told by our community members to really think about this. And I think they are right about that. I think every point that was made hit a part of our insides today. And I think that, I don't think this is a decision we should really rush into. I think they are, they are right in all aspects, but I think, I think, I don't want to be disrespectful in any way and, but I think having that unity and continuing to have the children in our rural areas be a part of Gallup McKinley County is critical also.
Priscilla, any others? Kevin?
You know, I just want to say that, you know, I really think that maybe more time should be taken at this point after hearing some of the comments, but, you know, I really think that people need to understand funding. You know, we have a budget that we go by. And then when we talk about transportation, school supplies, you know, all those monies are budgeted. Transportation buses has their own budget. There's a lot of that money that we can't use for transportation and it has to be used for certain items. Not all money can just be put and used anywhere we want. I mean, I wish it was that way, but it's not. Transportation money comes from the state and they designate a certain amount and that's all we get to use for transportation, parts, supplies, buses. And once that funding's gone, it's gone. We have other monies that are given to the district for school supplies, school equipment, and that's all it can be used for. So people really need to understand our budget and knowing that we don't just take money from anywhere and use it on anything that we need to. And so to say that we're taking money from the students and we'll be using student money is, is not true. The operational fund money, yes, is used towards that, but operational fund, fund money comes from everywhere. It comes from impact aid monies, it comes from the equalization money, it comes from tax money. It's not just tax money that's used. It's a combination of all kinds of money that we receive. So, and, you know, it'd be the same thing for, you know, using money to repaint a high school, to beautify the outsides, the trees, whatever. I mean, things like that build morale, bring, build, change is good. Change is good. Along with change comes a new... Along with change comes a new thinking. And I think that our district right now is going in very, very positive change. We're changing for the better. We're seeing so much in our school district at this time that we haven't seen in a long time, that is actually benefiting our children. And it's all due to change. So, you know, I really honestly feel that change is good.
Agushin, you have.
So, Mr. Long, could we have where these funds will be coming from explained by Giovanna?
Giovanna?
Uh, Mr. Long, before Giovanna, I'm going to say one more thing. We already approved a new logo. We already approved redoing our logo, and the, the funding is there. So the name change would only be a part of the change of that logo. It's already, would already be included. So there wouldn't be a great deal of added money just for the change of a name. It would also be the money used for, you know, the change of the logo, which has already been approved and is already in the works.
Agushin. Giovanna?
President Long, members of the board, community that's here today, members of the audience. So I'm going to talk about a couple of things. Mr. Mitchell actually mentioned the various funding sources that are utilized, and bus replacement is a very big issue for our district. And so we are actually looking at getting 51 new buses this coming year. It's been about a year and a half in the works, fighting through some legal, essentially, there was a, there was a settlement that was made. And so we are going to have a lot of brand-new buses, that would need branding either way, when they do come in. And they will be replaced based upon the oldest buses going out for the newest buses coming in. And, you know, these are, these are things that we as individuals who work for the district struggle with every day. As well as Mr. Mitchell mentioned, the board has been very forward-thinking in putting together a strategic plan that addresses many of the issues that we see come up through our school district. We are trying very hard to address the concerns of our students, their parents, and the community. Because I do see us as a community as a whole, for every individual that we serve, no matter where they live. So as, as we've looked into this, the potential rebranding, potentially the vehicles for total redesign would be approximately $3,000, once we have the new logo established. And then there may be other various costs, replacement of stationery. We have actually gone to try to be as conservative as possible, so we don't have pre-printed stationery for the majority of our work sites or school sites anymore. It's actually digital stationery, so that it's just printed every time something is sent out, so that we don't have a large stock of things that are pre-printed. We do have some of that, but not a ton of it. We moved away from it quite a while ago, just to be sure that we could be as efficient as possible. So ultimately, this would come from operational funding, and, you know, as Mr. Mitchell mentioned, absolutely correct, the operational funding source has various types of funding in it, whether it be maybe lease payments that we receive, impact aid, state equalization guarantee, various indirect costs that go into the operational funding form, formula, that's all kind of a, a put-together. Right now, our operational budget stands at about $120 million for next year. And so potentially, we're looking at maybe, in total, through the entire process, about $20,000.
Agushin. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much, Giovanna, for that breakdown.
Agushin, so what is the pleasure of the board on this agenda item?
Mr. President, one other last question. At our last meeting, we asked for more time, and we agreed, we all agreed, that we were going to put together a survey and take action at this meeting. Do we have the results of the survey?
We do. The survey was sent out about that time, and there were 2,045 respondents.
That's pretty good.
As far as the name change, there were 61.76% against the name change, and 38.24% for a name change.
Okay. One more question on that. On that, the survey, was it done all online? And is there a way that we can break that down to how many of our rural, outside of Gallup voted? You know, we did hear comments earlier of the, that we, that the rural areas don't have that much internet services. So how can we see what the, the numbers are on that, from the inner city, from Gallup and outer city?
I would have to get with the person who put that together, and maybe Bart knows a little bit more about that. It was done on what's called Survey Monkey, and it was sent out in an email to all parents that have email addresses. It, yeah, it also went on a robo-call, I believe, and so you could log on. Did it go out as text, too?
Yes.
I believe it did. Because I know I got mine on the phone, so I believe it was a text. Yeah, it was also on the GMCS website. So, I mean, I don't know how else we could do that as far as getting it out, but we can't tell the votes where they came from. So I don't think there is a way to know the county versus the city, or anything like that.
I, I, I have a comment on that, Mr. President. You know, this survey that went out, to me, doesn't tell us anything. I know that there was quite a few people who are like myself, you know, I'm not fully technology savvy and all this stuff. But I went on, and I did my survey, and I was able to do it once. And then somebody else that didn't get it, asked if I could send it to them, and I couldn't even, I mean, I brought it up, but it was just there, and all it said is, you have already did the survey, and I couldn't send it, and I couldn't do nothing. But other people who are so good at technology, were actually doing the survey more than once. I had somebody say they went to the library and got on, on all the different computers and did the survey, one person. I don't, I, I just don't think that this survey is good enough, because it's not, I mean, it's easily cheatable, I guess you could say. But that's the way I look at it. One person can do the survey more than once. I did it once, because I don't know how to get on and do it again, or trick my phone into letting me do it again. But most people do. A lot of people did, and when I heard it from one of, I'm not even, I, I heard it from somebody here in Gallup, that said they went to the library, and they did it on different computers, and they did the survey more than once. That just tells me that, you know, it's, it's not right.
Agushin. Just a comment about that, and Bart can correct me if I'm wrong. He's more into technology than I am, but I do believe, Mr. Mitchell, that the survey goes out to IP addresses. And so it is possible to vote more than once, using different IP addresses, or different computers, different, you know, if you're on your phone, or you've got a laptop, or I think that is, that is possible.
Thank you.
Bart?
[inaudible] Yeah.
Right. So, but anytime you do something like that, there is always a way around that, if people want to do that.
Yeah.
And so it is, it is tough to survey people with technology.
So I, so I guess, oh, gosh, I just, so there's two issues now. There's that multiple voting, and then also our parents and our grandparents that are not able to vote, because it was all done online. That really bothers me, and I don't know how we can fix that, guys. I know, I know we wanted this, and I know that we, we want to continue to move forward, but, mm, I don't know. What is the solution? And how can we get our parents to help in this area, to, even our students? I mean, I, I think it'd be right also for our students to play an important role in this. I mean, it's their district, it's their, their school. I don't know if that's something. I, I would like to entertain the motion, Mr. President, if we could table this to the next board meeting, and to see if there's a solution we can come up to. We heard from our leaders also, that we should think hard about this, and I think if we need to relook at how we can get maybe public, public forums, or public, what do they call out in our, the rural communities, at least we know, give us an opportunity, the ones that do go out to the chapter meetings, to talk to our leaders and our community members. So for me, that would, I think that, I would feel more comfortable if we could table this to the next board meeting. At least we give that much of a try.
Motion's been made to table this agenda item.
Mr. President, I have a quick comment. I'm sorry to interrupt you before we go too far.
Go ahead.
So we, we had voted already to, I guess, kick it. I don't know other, what other efficient means there is to conduct this type of survey. This is about 10 times the reaction that Mr. Hyatt thought we might get. I don't know, you know, I, I, I just don't know what else, what's an efficient way to do it. You know, I shared it on my Facebook page, I don't know if you shared it. I texted out the link to everybody that I know, to try to get it out there, to get the reaction from as many people as possible. And, you know, hey, we all committed at the last meeting to go with what the survey results were at this meeting, and we remember what Mr. Hyatt said about the, the time pressure to get all the branding correct during the summer. We have the summer, so that it rolls out all the buses, so they have the school district name on them, and things like that. I mean, I, I think we need to get down the road with this. You know, you just think about, you think about the effort and the time that's going to go into, I mean, what are you going to, go out to the chapter meetings? What kind of, what kind of attendance percentage do we have at chapter meetings? People at the meetings relative to the number of people that live in the area? I don't know for sure. You can go out and, you know, should we go door-to-door? And, I don't know, you know what I mean? Like, think hard about how this realistically is going to, realistically is going to work, and how much time it's going to take, and, and the type of deadline that Mr. Hyatt told us that we were on. My motion is that we abide by the survey results, like we said we would at the last meeting, and get down the road.
Good. There was a motion made to table by Priscilla. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Let's vote on the tabling motion. John, roll call?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manalito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
No.
Mr. Mortensen?
No.
Mr. Long?
No. So the tabling motion is defeated. We go to Chris Mortensen's motion, which is to vote based on the survey that was done, and based on what comments were made from the public. You have, is there a second?
Second.
So just let me reiterate. So the ranking from the survey was, number one, leave it as is, Gallup McKinley County Schools. Number two was McKinley County School District. So again, the vote from the survey was, number one was Gallup McKinley County Schools, leave it the same.
Okay? Okay. Roll call?
Mr. Mitchell?
Let me, I'm sorry, let me back up. May I clarify my motion? Okay, my motion is to abide by the survey results and keep the name of the district the same. We've already decided that the logo is going to change, and that's a non-issue at this point. We're strictly talking about the name, and the motion is to keep the name the same. Okay?
Okay. And then second, by Mr. Shaw, roll call, John?
Mr. Mitchell?
I honestly believe that our district is one entity, not two, and does not need two names. No.
Ms. Manalito?
I also vote no.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. And board members, thank you for your votes, and, and I think, you know, there's a lot of history to Gallup, some good, some bad. And, and I think way back, a lot of our Navajo families that used to come in to Gallup were not really felt welcome. That seems to be the bad side. And anytime there's capital outlay monies, the schools out at the rural areas, we are forgotten. And we want the city leaders to always remember that, we live out there. Always remember us. So with that, I guess the motion passes. Go, you have. And I just wish that we had more, less more time, and a better way of getting answers on our survey. But it's a done deal now, go, you have. Board members?
I'd like to make a motion, and we adjourn.
Okay, motion's been made by Christopher Mortensen, to adjourn, second by Michael Shaw. Roll call, John?
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Manalito?
I would like to say, I wish the mayor and Fran that we see you more often at our board meetings. You know, I've, I've attended a couple of your council or city meetings, and not just on issues like this. There's, there's more important issues that happen within our district that you guys need to be aware of. And I, I would really appreciate you coming out to more of our board meetings, and helping us with what's happening in our district, not just because of a name change. With that, yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
11:04.
11:04. We're adjourned.
You have.